Welcome to the Halifax Board of Selectmen's meeting on this date, March 10, 2020. First thing on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, if you'll join me.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Had to make up for all the voices we don't have here.
We're also being filmed by Area 58, you can see it on your local stations. Next on the agenda, any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Just, I'm going to ask the board to make sure they get into the likes because obviously I'm not taking minutes and Pam and Irma are going to need to know who made motions, new seconds and things like that.
Okay.
I move, approve the agenda from March 10, March 10, 2020?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
You didn't have an opportunity to see the minutes?
I didn't have a chance to read them.
I didn't.
I'm good.
I'll move them. I move, we approve the selectmen's minutes, there was not a date, but what was the date?
I didn't see it.
That's what. Yeah. I didn't see it either, I've got the email. Well, I can make it for a date to be announced later.
Do you want to just skip it till the next one?
Yeah, let's skip it.
Okay, in honor of a longtime resident of Halifax and a really gentleman Salvatore Basil passed away, it was a couple of weeks ago, would you take a moment of silence if you could? Thank you. Good evening, big audience tonight.
Mr. Hayward's here for a couple of contracts and then he would like to cut the audience in half. So if you, if you would indulge him in that endeavor, we have two contracts he's interested in, one is, he has a precision weather forecasting, I'm not sure what was needed this year.
It wasn't from his street.
I know. See if I can find that.
But they were spot on for the last storm, right?
Yes, they were.
In which case, it will just be Troy signing, there's only room for Troy on the contract. There we go.
That's for $1,200 and something?
Yeah.
$1,300?
I think it was $1,295.
I would entertain a motion for the other side.
I move, we vote to have Troy sign for the weather.
Precision weather forecasting.
Precision weather forecasting, I was just looking for, ah, there it is.
Is there a second?
Yep, just looking.
All in favor?
It's like fourth page.
Aye.
Aye.
And similarly for the Complete Streets program, the next phase, this was a prioritization plan that Green Seal Environmental would be doing for $38,000, there are a few minor expenses like mileage and such that Steve would also have to fund, but the actual work would be for 38 and that would, again, there's just room for one signature, so the board would authorize Troy to sign on behalf of the town.
But is that exactly?
So, it's complete streets, it's any hazard for bikes, walking, any bad end sections, stuff like that, we can get a full $400,000 grant.
Okay.
Well, you have to have this program.
You have to have them, I assume they're physically going to look at all the streets?
Right.
Okay, I just wanted to point that out.
That's, you know, the one I'm looking into, that they actually do the, all the streets, they drive around, they check.
So a pavement management program?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
You?
Yes, please. So there was a.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Anything else?
Well, the tracks, where they.
The crosswalk?
I was going to mention the crosswalks, there wasn't any action the board wanted, but just since Steve's here, Traffic Safety Committee met last week, what, earlier we had thought about having a series of articles, one per year, to do crosswalk controls at one crosswalk each year, instead the Traffic Safety Committee asked that the article for the annual town meeting be changed to ask for $30,000, actually putting on a special so that the work can be started earlier.
To do all the crosswalks.
Instead of just one year.
So you're going to build a false sidewalk? You're going to put a sidewalk in?
Over here, I think he was talking about.
Well, I haven't pulled them all yet, but the rest we already have, it's just to put lights up and so that all have crosswalk lights.
Okay.
And we're going to take that out of undesignated revenue, right?
Right.
Undesignated or?
I like to call it undesigned.
I hate, I hate the expression free cash.
It wasn't, it wasn't.
I hate that.
It's free.
It's never free, yeah.
I hate rainy day fund because you might have a long summer and it don't rain.
I think Gordon was asking a question.
I didn't know if it was going to come out of snow and ice or.
Oh, that's right, we did talk about snow and ice.
Yes, snow and ice.
That's right, we're going to transfer it to special, right?
You're right, yes.
Yeah, you're right.
It was a question on the number of storms we were going to have left to see if it was available.
So this last storm.
We still got Easter, we got Mother's Day, we have April Fools. I mean, we've had storms on all three, so.
Right. The only good thing for days is it's not going to.
It doesn't stay, right.
Yeah. Gordon, you're up.
Sorry, I'm not following.
No, it's okay. You know, there was no real.
There's no audience here, there's no pressure.
There was no closure on this discussion, are we, are we set with you then otherwise?
It's okay.
No, no, I mean, you don't have to leave, I mean, please say it.
You guys are six feet apart, so you have this spacing, it's us.
No, seriously, is there anything else you need to talk to me?
Is, is contract negotiation?
Not really, I mean, with the highway, it simply wages only.
Okay.
It's, we're not doing it three years without, I can talk to Steve aside at some point.
Okay.
Good night.
Good night, Steve, thank you.
Thanks.
I move, I move to affirm approval of the following warrants and commitments, payroll warrant number 76 for $367,971.04, vendor warrant number 77 for $38,333.67, school warrant number 78 for $327,101.59, withholding warrant number 79 for $131,125.97, and mobile home park fee number three for $5,160.
Second.
And I'll move, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. I'll move vendor warrant number 80, doesn't give me a mouth to draw.
I think, is it?
That's my head wrong. Second.
Any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, abstain.
We got the tech, selectmen's bills.
No, Pam isn't here directly now.
Get no traffic cop.
Okay, we go add revolving expense $42 to express newspapers for earth removal permit for Halifax investment. Selectment expense account to W E Mason for $139.24, and from the wall line $70 for the law's book subscriptions via internet for R E L X, otherwise known as LexisNexis.
Second. All for them, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Pam will be happy we.
Shall we?
Sure. Okay. Just on the police department, not for you to do anything about this today, but at some point I'm recommending that you have a sit down with the police chief on the COPS grant funding, the application for the grant is going to be submitted this week, instead of signing any merits of grant, the maximum amount, it will fund during the three years of the grant, is $125,000, the COPS grant is a state grant program, I don't mind tripping it's federal money also, that allows communities to hire additional police officers, what happens is the federal and state money goes down in percentage each year, and so at the end of three years, the town or city's fully paying for that officer and then has to keep that officer on, I think for, it's sort of like a minimum of another three years.
Yep.
We did that type of program about 25 years ago also, the personnel costs, and I include the overtime or the health insurance, would be about $191,000 over three years, so we would be putting up, let's say roughly 65 plus health insurance, plus any overtime for that officer. I did want the board to discuss this possible position with police chief sometime in the future, along with the discussion about the proposed lieutenant deputy chief position, because I don't know, I don't know if it's clear, certainly not necessary to me, but to anybody else, how many officers we would end up within the department, including the chief, are we adding two more people, are we adding one, and then looking at that, those options versus the other priorities for the town.
Sure.
Well, we've gone up and down with the personnel in that department, it's consistently lower than the average.
Right, well, we've tried to keep it to 11, that's our binary goal, but you know, we have people, as you mentioned, passing through.
Is the grant tied to the person that's hired with it, or is it, if we're at 11, we have to go to 12?
Yes. That's, yeah, because again, I remember from 25 years ago, you, you know, we had a certain number of officers and we were committed then to get to additional officers, I think we were hiring two or three back then.
Yep.
Then also the same thing on the motorcycle funding, I know that the chief has been using his gift account to, or the police department's gift account for payments for the lease for the motorcycle, and this year the chief has proposed it in the capital budget, if the purchase is now recommended, and he's asked that the lease payments be included in the department's operating budget, as I mentioned, but just like with the additional police officers, the board should discuss how to place those costs for the motorcycle along the other requests from the department and the town.
I don't believe the capital planning committee is supportive of using the capital budget to.
Well, it's not, it's not really a capital expense, it's perishable item of.
Well, in essence, it's another vehicle, just as, certainly less expensive than buying a new police car, and we probably start, you know, if we bought one, we probably would then purchase one every so often, but I think the board needs to discuss that in a sense of, given the other costs for the police department, is this a priority in a sense of, what would you give up to keep this, or what would you want instead of this in the future? On the COVID-19, obviously there's been, even as I was writing my notes tonight, the governor declared a state of emergency, it doesn't have a legal effect on our actual activities here, it does allow the governing or powers to not go through, necessarily all the checkoff boxes and such to take certain actions. The board did meet with department heads last Thursday, review the latest information on the pandemic and what the town's doing, what it should be doing, alleviating the issues. I know, I got an advisory from Dr. Prue over at Silver Lake, update us all the actions that the school system is taking, but the general advice, it doesn't matter who you are, is try and be smart about the situation, you know, the washing of hands, yes, but I think certainly Governor Baker is encouraging people not to have large gatherings, I don't know how that's going to intersect with the requirements that we have to meet for our means, so for instance, we have one scheduled on our Chapter 40B project for the Country Club of States next Wednesday, so we may have, you know, 30 people, for instance, in this room, or 40 people up in the great hall, but under Chapter 40B, we're obligated to a certain timetable, but people should practice hygiene, if they feel sick, whether it's COVID or the flu or cold or something else, stay home, obviously people over a certain age and people with health problems are more endangered with this, so we should probably take additional precautions. We're going to continue until, otherwise I would say, operating as normal, I know our maintenance crew for both the school and the town buildings are striving to keep the places clean and sanitary, they're spending more time washing down common surfaces like doorknobs and such, but that's where we are right now, I know there's a lot of concern for a lot of people out in Halifax about what they can do or not do, I would say, you know, take the advice of the medical professionals that are there and try, you know, try as well you can, try and maintain a sense of normalcy as well as possible given the circumstances. Now, for the town's work, I mentioned the 40B, unless the governor comes with a specific order that says, you know, heretofore, you know, the means canceled and the timetables revised or anything, I would say we're going to continue having our board committee meetings and hearings and such.
Should you, could you reach out to the government's office and ask that question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Just say that we have the 40B and in order to meet the deadlines.
Because we don't know at this point how long this situation is going to last, if it's only a couple of weeks, it's one thing, if it's a couple of months, it's pushing the calendar on, if nothing else, a lot of town meeting will be too long.
Maybe, maybe.
Well, maybe, but that's my point, you know, I think at some point we're going to ask, you know, we're going to ask staff to quarantine in place if they may be affected when they're not showing signs of sickness, you know, we have, it was about 80 or 90 cases now in Massachusetts, many of them connected that Biogen conference, I know, which probably leaves most people in Halifax out, but unfortunately, the, the cases are scattered across the state, you know, they're also in the land for that matter, we also, not tonight, but probably if we need to sometime next two weeks, come up with some structure for work from home policy, and probably should not just cover this situation, it should cover other situations, but also on a regular basis, so that we're establishing something that we would always have in place, whether it's on a regular basis or special.
And we have something in place for case of storm or.
For storm, we just, you have me closing the building, but we don't do work from home during the storm.
That could be a foundation for going from there.
Well, typically that's a day or maybe two.
We do have a 745 on Davis Automotive and officially opened the hearing, the continuation of the hearing for the revocation license, I do want to say that they made a payment of $2,800 earlier today, so they're moving along on their schedule, I'm hoping that by the time we hold another revocation hearing, they'll be all caught up, my recommendation is to continue the hearing, well, take no action tonight, but otherwise, oh, continue the hearing for May 11th at 6:30, I'm not quite sure when we're going to start our pre-town meeting that night, but I know we don't, we'll be meeting by 6:30.
Do you need a motion? Do you need a motion?
Yes, please.
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And I know our 750 is here, this is the folder with all the tools, I don't know how much Pam gave you in your folders, but that's the file on this, and what, the hearing tonight is this application by John Peck for a removal, I think it's approximately 1,200 yards, yards of fill from a pond on his property on Thompson Street, and as part of that process, under the town's bylaws, a hearing has to be held, others need to be notified and such, I know Joseph Peck is here representing, and I know your, I think there needs to be some discussion, for instance, on the plan, the drawings for this, I know they're looking for a waiver of some sort as part of that, but you might want, I think just to formally start the hearing to explain what the removal budget was, it's now more than a year ago, I believe, since it occurred.
I think it was May 2018, I didn't really know what you thought, and I just kind of came in and saw letters going my way.
And Joseph, for the record, you're here on behalf of your father, John Peck.
Yes.
Okay. We're going to get the heat turned off.
Okay. Isn't there more in that, or is it just above?
I don't think all this is required for the removal.
What's that for? That's what's in the packet, right?
Joe, just how much do you know about the situation?
I know, I think I know everything, well, I know everything my father knows, I'll put it that way.
That's a hit full.
Well, on this subject, I think else I'm still a little behind, so the pond that we own this on our property, it's used to irrigate three cranberry bogs for a hajj next door, and the pond does get very low in a dry summer, it's under a foot, foot and a half, make up, if you have a problem irrigating out of it, and my father's friend also needed some fill at the same time, so my father, he helped two people out of, they're doing one thing, and he allowed him to take some dirt, which he used to put some fill in for some three or four house lots he bought.
Where did he get the soil from?
The soil came from the irrigation pond, so.
So take it from the bottom of the pond?
From the bottom of the pond, it's something coming on the sides because they washed out a lot of its sand, and the banking needed to get redone, but it was kind of three enterprises, they brought their own equipment, their own employees, their own trucks down there, and they brought it, it's, our, and I know, my father knows, they bought even three or four house lots right against our driveway, it all went there to fulfill for those, but then he sold some of them, I think he may have, but the reason we asked for the waivers is, my father was under the impression that you could take so much dirt out of there, he didn't realize how much was coming out, I think he thought it was going to be under a thousand, yeah, and it ended up being like 1,200, and the map that you have on file is a map of what the department was after they dug, so we're asking for a waiver on the one before because we can't go back and get a map of.
Was there any change in the contour of the land because it's all been removed?
I mean, barely, the, the height of the ground didn't change, and it was just made to make the pond deeper, and obviously with machines there, and there was some washout, but if a, a banking eroded, you know, a couple of feet, nothing more that sometimes doesn't happen in a heavy rainstorm, where rock lets go and the sand goes with it, but there was no change in the land.
Tom? Do we now have a plan of the existing conditions as the.
Yes, yeah, the map that you guys have, I originally thought was the, the map of what it was like before they dug.
Okay, that's why I just wanted to confirm.
It's afterwards, so I can't, I can't get my, I called.
Because that would, that would be something I would be inclined to want to have, is the existing condition, so that we can gauge from this time forward, should there be more.
Yeah, that, that's what it is there, and I have no intention on.
I think it's just one page, Gordon, you can just fold it in fours.
And my whole life has been trying to not have that job, but, so, I'm just, it's going on forever, but I can, it's certainly not going to happen again, I know the permit process, if it ever does come up, I'll make sure that the stuff is done correctly, it will be in my hands going forward.
I think the issue that I had was that it doesn't show the contour lines, so.
The only, there's only a portion of the land showing the contour, just that mound there by the pond.
Right here, yeah.
But if it's by the pond, isn't that what you want, there's only one side of the pond that was done, it was on the southwest corner of the pond, it's all dug out, and the dirt is done.
Those are all right.
But if you wanted, this the house, I'm going to make a bigger map so you can see it.
I think just to have it on file, I think just to have it on file, because we didn't have anything, and that was sort of the, when I came on last year, that was kind of the information that I had, was we didn't have anything on file previously that we could look back at to say, okay, because you're showing these contour lines here, but there's nothing to compare it to from previous.
Right, so, but I can't get anything that was previous.
I don't mean in this section, I mean, like, for the whole lot, because I don't think you have a baseline that you submitted.
No, I, I honestly, I didn't get involved in this until I was hurt, so if I let it to my father, and I, because he can't get out of the house, so I, what wasn't submitted, I don't know, I'm just trying to help you guys get the mess cleaned up as well.
So are you suggesting you want the whole pond?
That side of the pond is actually the only side, I mean, to get the topography done of the whole pond, which sort of is silly, because that's the only side that could be dug out of it, because behind that is a swimming pool on one side, if you get that on the other side, there'll be no pond, because it's well below the grade of the water, and the other side is all cranberry bogs, it's dike roads around it, it's only the west side, the southwest side of that where it could be changed, it literally is impossible to change any other side of that pond.
So we're looking at this, is that what we're looking at?
And I think the span, because I'm.
What do we, where is this in relation to this?
That's, that's sort of like, you don't know where, what we're looking at.
I really don't know how that ends all that well.
Is that the, is that the house?
That's the house there, yes.
Okay, so this is Thompson Street, I'm guessing?
Right, yes, Thompson Street.
Thompson, okay, so it's the pond behind the house, not next to the house?
Right, the bogs are next to the house, and that's lower land, like, this could be dug, because it will.
Clearly you're not digging here.
Right, and can't, this land is a lot lower than the pond, so if, if that opened up, there would be no pond left, because the whole pond is man-made, it's made to irrigate the bog, so that's why it's elevated above the ground around it.
So it'll flow into the bogs.
Yeah, and it's got the dike roads, so I mean, if it was dug, any of there, it's going, the pond will disappear.
Okay, this is orchard.
And I know you had something compared to before, but I mean, I've been living here now, and I mean, I'm sure that nothing's going to be.
This is your pool?
No fill is going to be taken out of there with.
That would be your pool, right?
Yeah, that's the pool and this is the road that's.
Yeah, so this is the area that was dug?
And it was like back in here, it was dug.
Okay. So this is, this, this edge here would be underneath this overlay here.
Does it give the dimensions on it?
Not, not, not really.
Oh, it's just over 800 feet, I guess, oh, that's, that's to the house, okay, to the edge of the pond.
Yes, 600 feet from here.
Is that 600?
600 feet from here to that house.
The biggest concern I have is there's no major change in the contour of the land, at least as far as we can see, we is presented here, and if there's no pictures or diagrams of it before.
I mean, we would have had something from when there were earth removal operations 20 years ago, because when it came in, I know there was an active earth removal operation happened.
That's when they were building the pond.
That's what we were doing.
Yeah, like I said, this is a fuck coming on my whole since I was a little kid, so to me it's just, you know, it's just background noise, but there isn't going to be any more if you're going forward, I just, I mean, I certainly don't, I don't want the pond any bigger, and I know what the, how it works now as well, so even if there were, I would certainly go to town, go to the permit process.
Just so I have a clear picture, are the bogs, do the bogs belong to your father?
No.
Kenny Harshes?
Kenny Harshes, yes.
Okay, but the pond belongs to you folks?
Yes, so when the bogs were sold to him.
You retained the pond?
We kept the pond, we gave them an easement so they could still irrigate.
Okay.
It's the property line, it's actually the dike.
The dike road going up the side here, so that way we can use, and going down that way, that way we could both use the dike road, but.
They do, they do have to, I don't know if it's in writing, it was a little cowed and sold, but they have the right to pump the water out of there, but.
Well, it's what you need, the board, they want to be satisfied, one way or another on this.
I don't know, I just think having a baseline for what's there is necessary.
Again, I don't have to replant, but isn't that what that is?
It does show the, it does, you're correct in that, it shows the contours for where the contours are, those mounds right by the pond, the thing is that, and Gordon can say I'm incorrect, I think what Gordon's looking for is a wider spread of the areas around there showing the elevation changes, not just right by the pond, but in the other areas around there.
It is, but is that something we require? It is, but is that something we require everybody to do?
Yeah, actually, if you check the bylaw when we asked.
For a permit?
Right, yes.
So, I mean, normally.
They asked for the law.
But they're not looking for a permit, is I guess.
And then the post, but this is the post, but you're.
A post permit. Yeah, I know, it's after the fact, I understand.
But that, that is, I, I mean, I don't, but, you know, I think Gordon said is that, you know, they want to notice now in case you change it in the future. But if it changes in the future, I'm certainly going to come in, which first of all, I'm not going to change it in the future. Things change. If it does, I'll certainly come in through the proper paperwork then. I mean, but I don't know how much it costs to get plans out, it's going to cost $2,000 to have plans made up in case I go to do something in the future. But basically, it's to stop me from lying to you guys, that I'm not going to, you'll have something on file, and then I'm going to sneak dirt out of the yard, and then you can prove that I did it, really would be the only reason. If you provide a map now unless I was going to take dirt out, which if I am, I'll certainly.
I don't want to put words in Gordon's mouth, but I think what he's getting at is had you pulled the permit, we would have a map contour.
You'd have a pretty map, but you can't go back and get that.
No, I understand, but at least we have a complete map. I think, like I said, I'm not trying to put words in.
I understand, I understand, but I think the issue for the town side is that I think we need something more complete. I know it's an after the fact type thing, but to guard for the town, I think you need more information on the map.
Well, what is it, dude?
I think, I think, looking at some of the other earth removal stuff, to have a contour of the whole property, so that you know what, like, if you look here, like it says, this, this area is 57, and then this area is 60, and then this area is 45. But normally, the whole, the whole site would be done, like the whole.
You're talking about the perimeter of the pond.
And define the whole site.
Well, I, I think you would have.
88.6 acres?
Here's where it gets complicated. You can take 1,000 yards out without a permit. I don't know how often you can do that. I don't think our bylaw addresses that.
And can't we move, and so there's mounds of dirt there that are being left there to dry out, can't we move those on the property anywhere we like?
Yeah.
Without a permit, so what is the point of getting the topography down?
Only time we need a permit, we're going to be removing all the property using the two highways.
Which we're never going to do again. And honestly, if I was, I would get a map made of what it looks like now, and then have it done after the fact. But I'm not going to be taking dirt out of there. I'm going to have the land in the water, so.
You want to continue this, or you're satisfied?
Well, part of it is that we didn't, our representative Liam Plaine was not able to get out there in the interval because of a family issue. So he had called me, in fact, earlier today, about the same time you called, Joe, that you could get out there after this. And so my recommendation would be, saying aside any other issues, to continue the hearing to the 24th at 7:45.
Yeah, I'd like to hear.
But also, I don't, you may have residents here who want to speak to this, so.
Yeah, we got a notice, I guess, because we're in a butter, so I just didn't know how, what, anything we should be concerned about, or.
Last year, there was a really bad smell that came from that, and I wasn't sure if that was.
We don't have our minutes person here, so if you could identify your name and address, just for the record, thank you.
Evan and Cheryl Smith, 383 Thompson Street. We weren't sure what this meeting was even about.
It wasn't that, what you were referring, this was just, this was making.
Joe, Joe.
Oh, sorry, my apologies, my apologies.
So, back in 18, a job pack, Joseph's father, removed about 1,200 cubic yards of material from the irrigation pond, basically taking it from the bottom of the pond and shipping it off the land. Under the town's bylaw, you're allowed to take off 1,000 cubic yards of material. Anything other, more than that requires a permit from the board selectman. They didn't get the permit. He's, Joseph, on behalf of his father, has come in to ask for a permit, even though the work's already been done now, almost two years later, because the alternative is that the town would fine his father a certain amount of money for violation of the town's bylaws.
Okay, I'd like to hear from Steve.
Steve Ryan?
Yeah, I know Steve, he's a respectable guy.
Relative laborist, and we moved to continue.
I just want to make sure that people bothered to come in here if they had anything else they wanted to say. If I, you made, you came in, I want to make sure you, I don't want you to have to come in twice, so if you have any questions or want to say anything.
Not sure, is there, is it just a technicality that we got a notice, or is there any trucks coming?
No, our understanding is that the project is done. All the work was done back in 18. You receive it, because you're in a butter to the property, you receive a notice. Under the town's bylaw, you're required to receive a notice when we're doing an earth removal permit. Because in fact, you would have questions just like that, like, how long is this project going to go on? How many cubic yards is it going, how many trucks are going to come in and out?
What's the impact going to be?
Yeah, but here it's already done.
Correct.
No objection.
What is the land plan going to be? What is he going to be doing, Steve, is that a thing?
Steve Ryan, yeah.
What will he be looking for?
Just to verify the information that's on the plan and such.
Okay.
Mostly to continue to?
To 7:45 on March 24th.
7:45 on March 24th.
Did you need anything else from me, or just come on the 24th?
Come back on the 24th at this point, yeah. I mean, unless the board is clearly saying, we want something other than that, what's there, I mean, it's going to be one way or the other.
Let's talk to Steve first.
Okay, fine. So we're going to talk to Steve Ryan, figure out which way they want to go on, whether to have a larger scale plan, I guess is the best way.
Thanks for coming on, Joe.
No problem.
Thank you, John.
COVID, just on the interest court case, there've been no actions the last two weeks on Amanda's estates. The ZBA submitted its decision letter on the approval of the special permit to the town. It will be between the appeal period. I do expect Amanda's estates will request some type of new building permits or modification. Of the previous building permits for the structures that were completed, and any issuance of the building permits can be appealed also. Country Club Estates, which actually takes up most of the spolder at this point. The, this is a 30-unit multifamily, I think it's 10 buildings, I think it's 10 duplexes and, five duplexes and five 4-unit buildings. This is going to be situated between Country Club Drive and where Nazarell Farm is, but a little bit farther back from Plymouth Street. The hearing is scheduled for Wednesday, March 18th, at 7:00 PM in the Selectman's Meeting Room. If we end up with enough attendees, we'll be going up to the Great Hall. I did contact both cables, so they'll have a camera up there, and also talk to Scott about getting the Great Hall set up in case we need to move up there. This is better, easier for recording and acoustics, but if we need to be up there, we'll be up there without a problem. I did file an application with Mass Housing for 10,000 in technical assistance, to contract with someone to guide the ZBA through the process. That's the same type of technical assistance they received when we were doing the Blacklight 40B seven years ago. And I hope to hear back early next week with an approval on a contact. I worked with Bert Gainer and Trey McQuestle to pick two individuals from the list applied by Mass Housing. I do expect at that meeting on the 18th, the ZBA will hire a review engineer at the meeting on Wednesday. McQuestle had recommended someone, I had contacted Bert Gainer. Trey McQuestle said we should wait until that Wednesday to handle the hiring. And the developer has provided a check to pay for the review engineer, so we won't be paying town money for that. And I have posted a form with the Selectman for the meeting on the 18th, in case a form refuses to show up.
I will not be able to attend it.
Negotiations?
Actually, I do think I have some.
Building facility needs, the first meeting is tomorrow at 2:00 PM here in the Selectman's Meeting Room. Traffic safety committees, crosshocks, we've talked about. Mount Ponce upon and boating hazards, Christopher Jean of Representative LaNtra's office have contacted me about the issues. He heard from Fishing Game, it states no role in cleaning up ponds, hazards in the ponds, such as the ones in Mount Ponce. DFGA said most towns simply put up signs that warn boaters of hazards. Of course, if we had a boat, enough people to do it, maybe we would, but we don't. So what I'm going to, I'd like to do is send certified letters to the governor, environmental affairs, and DFW notify them of the hazards. In essence, we're trying to follow the same procedure as in state law when they're dealing with road defects. Basically, you put people on notice, you have a hazard on your property, you're responsible for taking care of it. I probably would try and publicize the need for locations, so if somebody says, well, I know there are rocks, you know, 100 feet offshore, including my house, or something like that, then we can at least give some locations and such. So that's where I'm going with that. The Water Department, Keith Swanson was in, they need to make changes on the mandatory water use restrictions bylaw that we have in place as part of our town bylaws. This is in connection with what's called the withdrawal permit. Any Water Department or Water Facility needs a withdrawal permit from DEP. I think it's every 10 years that they need to have it renewed. As far as this renewal, they said to the water commissioners, you need to update your water restriction bylaw. So I'll be getting that on to the board.
Charlie, I had a question about that. So when we go on a water restriction, is there a reason why we don't take water from Silver Lake-Brockton connection? Because.
Other than we, other than we'd have to pay for it.
Because when we're on water restriction and all the towns around us are.
Brockton's selling water.
Brockton's not on water restriction.
Well, Whitman's on Brockton water.
Right, so they don't have the restrictions.
No, because Brockton can keep taking all the water they want because they sell it.
Well, and I'm sure that they have a withdrawal, I'm sure they have a withdrawal permit, but they have to stay within the withdrawal permit. And if they've, they're, you know, I don't know the numbers, in the sense of what point does it, you make, Keith has to make a judgment call, the water commissioners have to make a judgment call, same as the city of Brockton would. Here's what water we have available each day, here's what's being used. We now have to make a decision to restrict the usage of that water. I have to assume, and I don't know that, that whatever their water withdrawal permit is, is up here versus the amount of money, water they have available.
I had a discussion with Keith. We've got a decent cushion, right?
Yeah.
But in order to have gotten that DEP permit to withdraw, which was very difficult to get, to my understanding, and we were fortunate to get it because we were vying with other communities that wanted to draw more water. This was one of the requirements.
Requirements, huh?
To, you know, have stricter guidelines in place, so.
So we can only water 115 minutes each morning and 10 minutes at night?
But if you want, I can.
Mandatory showering.
I can talk to DEP and find out in fact what the limits are for Brockton versus in terms of withdrawal permit as to when they would trigger a, you know, they'd have to do the same type of thing we do.
It just seems like we're all drawing from the same aqua form, so.
Yeah, the interesting thing would be, who's actually watching Brockton's numbers?
I don't know.
Yeah, exactly what I'm.
Well, we do get the daily report showing how much water they're using, not just diverting. You know, the amount of water, if any, they're diverting from Mount Ponce upon, but also a amount of water after processing and such that actually goes into the system.
Is the, is the.
Did they go ahead and buy the?
I don't think they've done that yet.
That's one of the questions I wanted to ask the new mayor, whether or not they in fact did go out and buy a deceleration.
They, he said they had an, it was an article written in Enterprise saying that they had reached an agreement, but I don't know that the city council voted to.
The mayor was supportive, as I remember in that article, which he may not have been in the past. Although I thought that the town of Hingham was also at one point buying into that. Maybe it was a different plan.
I think there was, you were right, I think there was supposed to be a pipe in essence from Brockton all the way up there.
Really?
Yeah. But I'll find, let me see what I can find from DEP.
Okay, and just to ask because you always seek Brockton and Whitman with no restrictions, so all the communities that supply the water are on restriction.
Especially given that the water's sitting in Halifax and.
Yeah, it was a couple of years ago, we went to the South Shore Chamber of Commerce. When the, then the late Mayor Carpenter was discussing water and sewage, because they had gotten permission to accommodate more sewage, so Brockton was looking to aggressively market water and sewage. Of course, you're not paying for.
It was fertilizer, yeah.
Aldana Road, sales and swaps, the county signed the, sent over the signed offer, which the board had signed a couple of weeks ago. And this was for the county offering a solid interest in parcels A and B. Next step is for the county to write up the deed. Fishing Game will review the deed. Once the date's picked for the actual sale, we'll set up the payment and start gathering signatures at our end. Joe Pierce did a required work with the property, meaning parcels A and B, that way it can transfer to the state, she didn't see any problems. Al Girulama, is it?
Girulama.
Senate Bray's office confirmed that special legislation for Aldana Road's been filed, it's Senate Doc 2841. So I have a copy of that legislation, I'm just hoping it will move along.
Something better than slowly?
Well, you know, I'll get to the Gainer legislation, but that hasn't left the committee on the third reading now, it's been almost a month. So I'm not quite sure of the holdup here. Zoning in the multifamily revisions, there'll be another discussion on that on next Tuesday, on the 17th at 7:00 PM in the Selectman's Meeting Room, and copies of the latest draft have been distributed. We did the earth removal permit. Harrison Junk Car, there's no movement, literally by Mr. Harrison. Somehow the fence, which was piled, the car is now on the ground. He had been told that the fires would commence again on March 1st, it's been 10 days, so I'm recommending sending him a parking ticket for the last 10 days, 10 days or a procedure there. If that's okay with the board.
Sounds good, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
On 92 Linguistry, I just ran out of time, I have not been able to get the letters out on the junk car, the boat there. I'm going to try and get that done this week. Landfill monitoring contract tying bond, this is for the monitoring of the cap landfill here on Hemlock Lane for $45,650 for three years through the Board of Health, and there are two copies for the board to sign.
Is that an increase of the previous?
I'll have to ask. I know it's within their budget. And this would be signed by everybody in this case. Chief, did you want to talk anything about COVID?
No, no, no discussion.
Okay, just want to make sure. Civil Service and Police, or a couple of weeks ago, I had given you copies of the draft policies that the police chief had written up. I was bringing it up again in case you wanted any changes to those drafts. It's going to be part of the negotiations for both contracts. The contracts will refer to the policies, we won't include the entire policies inside the contract. Don't refer to it if we end up going out of civil service. Keith Alls Sales, Robert J. Meniskis, who's the owner, has asked that the license be changed from Keith Alls Sales to Keith Alls Sales LLC. In this case, the board would sign both licenses. Doesn't require a hearing or a notice, their board is right to put a change of name. So I'm recommending the board approve the change of name on the license, and then you can all sign it if you do that.
So moved, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's see, for, we have a live entertainment permit for Tikalins Salon on April 26th. Troy would need to abstain on this. They've done these events before, about any problems, and we have the usual stipulations in here.
So moved, second.
All in favor, Tom?
Oh, excuse me.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Okay, and then here for signatures. Electricity aggregation program, I worked with Colonial Power Group on a new set of rates for three years, starting in September 2020. When the current rates expire, going to August of 2023, the basic rate will be just a little over 10 and a half cents per kilowatt hour. And the 100% wind energy contract, those people want green power, will be 10.643 cents per kilowatt an hour. And that's going to compare favorably with our current aggregation rate of 10.876 cents per hour. Reason for the drop is because natural gas prices have been going down, and therefore electricity, particularly electricity costs are going down also. There'll be probably a public information session in the summer, a publicity campaign, so residents and businesses can get updated information of the program and take advantage of the better rates. We did precision weather forecasting already. We do have a request from a resident to pro-rate a, resulting in a bill, not abate it, but doing the opposite, in that the person had the, his bill abated back in the fall all properly. the opposite in that the person had the, his bill abated back in the fall all properly. He's now asking to get back onto the town's recycling program and asking that the board have charged him $18 for the remaining four months of the year. The $50 charge is for the full year, so he's looking for approximately a third of the cost for a third of the year.
Have we done this before?
I can't remember anybody coming in in the middle of the year to start up again.
I haven't had anything, I don't remember anything prorated back, like the, most of them were just completely eliminated.
Right, but this person wants to come back on. I would say
So he wants, he wants to pay just for the rest of the year?
Right, yes.
If we were to do it, I would be inclined to only do it as a one-shot deal. You know, if he wants to do it again next year.
Well, his intention is that, he said for $18 for the remaining four months and a fiscal 20 and then $50 for the entirety of fiscal.
I think that we don't abate anybody's bill for the rest of the year. I would say no. Because the policy that we have in place to abate it, like we don't say when somebody's bill comes in, somebody's abatement request comes in after the deadline. We don't say, oh, we'll, we'll abate you $40 instead of the 50.
Right, yeah, point well taken.
So what's the motion?
Move to deny?
I, I would move that he has, has to pay the, the $50, just like everybody else has to, even when they have private service and they don't get the abatement paperwork in in time.
I'd second that.
Well, I look at it this way, if somebody moved into a new house, a new building, even though they hadn't been around, he still would have to pay.
Yeah, somebody would have paid it, be at the home.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we received a letter from Skylar Wolseley from Ballston Spa, New York. Because he's really interested in traffic engineering, because he's since sent a number of diagrams showing his recommendations for how the traffic lights and the lanes should be changed at our three traffic light intersections. I'm not, so I try and go through all of it. I just would recommend that everything be passed along to Steve Hayward.
So moved. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Massachusetts School Building Authority did send back the signed documents of the First Amendment to the project funding agreement. So that got done finally. I believe now they have what they want and all the signatures they could ever want. So I am in contact with Vertex and make to finally close out that portion of project. This is not the fire suppression system, this is the roof side towards windows, part of the project. Again, get our final reimbursement from the state, so we'll continue working on that.
Charlie, on, on that project?
Yeah.
Where we have all the warranties and everything?
For, yeah, various, yeah.
Whose responsibility is it to follow up to make sure that we're doing whatever is required by the warranties?
Well, I would think it's going to be the schools since they have the personnel available.
Okay, because the situation with the high school, it was supposed to be inspected every two, well, it was supposed to be inspected twice a year and it wasn't done for, I just want to make sure that we don't
Let me do this, let me get into contact with Matt, see if he has a schedule that he's following. If he doesn't, then he and I can go back through the warranties and look.
Okay.
Well, this is one of the reasons we wanted to have a supervisor.
On the annual special town meeting wards, it was being worked on and reviewed by the Finance Committee right now. Deadline for the specials is the 24th. Now, so I'm timed for the Selectments Meeting two weeks from now for review by the board, so we'll go through the articles one by one. There may be ones that the board will say, well, look, nobody's actually proposing this, this is just an idea that was rattling around, let's take it off the warrant, so we can reduce the size of the warrant. Bud's Goods and Provisions, the host community agreement was sent to Bud's Goods. Next up for them is to send a license application to the state. They also can start the zoning process, but they suspect they'll start the state licensing process first. However, I'm still, I'm more concerned about that community impact fee and the money coming to the town. There was a bill that didn't really change things, at least on the bill level, or the community impact fee and how it could be used. It's supposed to correspond to the amount of cost that the town incurs for a marijuana establishment, but the bill does allow a lot of leeway to the Campus Control Commission Act, new regulations concerning the host community agreements and such. I would say that would include the community impact fee. It's passed the House by an overwhelming margin. What I would plan on doing is sending a note to Senator Brady, just pointing out that if in the process, whether it's through the legislation or through the regulations by the CCC, that if they eliminate this incentive for communities that basically says, you know, it's a one for one, you can't bring in more money than you're actually spending, whether it's a refund process or however it's set up, that there will be, and that the impact fee will end after five years. I'm not, it's not true in the legislation whether you could then sign another host community agreement with another impact fee.
Well, that's a major incentive for towns to go into it. The fact that they're going to receive some kind of technical utilities, you know, within the realm of law. If they're saying that after a certain period of time, nope, can't do it.
Well, and that's my, what would be my point is, in terms of the permitting process, as much as the board signed the host community agreement, we still need to be going through the special permit and site layer review. I don't know that they will be the enthusiasm for having, other than retail sales where we would get the sales tax, but if we're just getting cultivation and manufacturing, then there may not be as much enthusiasm here or other communities for cultivation and manufacturing and that. The, you know, we've acknowledged, for instance, that there are downsides, especially for the abiders. And that as much as it may be a disadvantage to them, that there'd be advantage for the town to have the money coming in. If that money's not going to be coming in that we can use for other functions other than costs incurred, there's less of an incentive for us to be saying yes to these.
So where we sign that contract and the law changes, both sides would be required to live up to that contract? As it's challenged?
Yeah, that's the way I read it. Other than where the law says specifically, there are provisions you can't have in the contract. So the, you know, nice marijuana facility, you got there comparable if something happened to it, fork over $10,000 for the holiday program. Can't do that. The law, the law is written, the one that's before the legislature, is saying, any money the town gets, or any money that is, comes out of the marijuana facility, for instance, you're going to give it to the Boys and Girls Club.
Yeah.
All that falls under the 3%. You can't do 3% plus here's a charitable donation type of situation. It's very explicit in there.
But we
We don't have anything like that.
But other communities
Yes.
That's something. So the special permit could still require that the, the water is connected down that street fixing, repairing the road or building a road in that area.
Or giant fans to keep blowing it back into the yard and that.
Well, keep in mind, a lot of that road's in middle of our
Yes. Just as, you know, when, when we're looking at the Chapter 40B project, we're looking at traffic mitigation there. Or, let's put stop and shop or Walmart, that we wanted traffic lights put in at those intersections.
We can't have a chap, right?
Glad we get the road repaired.
Be a lot of blurry eyes.
Pine Street North Map Lot, Map 10 Lots 965, 967. Chris Carmichael, the special building inspector for the property, confirmed that it is buildable, variances, et cetera, could still be needed depending on where a house might be situated versus the setbacks. Anyone wanted to pull building permit, still need to submit a set of plans so that Mr. Carmichael could decide if anything else was stated. So that's where there's no building plans or building permit submitted and therefore, but if they are, then they'll go to Mr. Carmichael for a view and decision there. As I mentioned, sorry, skipping that, share director, building maintenance, I still need to work on a job description. Selectment of Finance Committee will need to look at the financing of this position versus ours, the craftsman, the building maintenance department. I think there's some, you know, we like to do everything. The question is how much of what we can do and what's going to be the priority is getting craftsmen or simply getting more hours for Scott's department or, and/or having a joint maintenance director for all the buildings. Gainer legislation, I said it's still sitting in third reading. I had talked, I've been communicating with Kathy Lenatra. I just heard back from her today and that's where she, we'll keep pushing on that. Mentioned Davis Automotive. We did, and near the deadline, I think it was the 26th, we did end up with a repeat article. Petition articles meant to be in a town meeting to allow marijuana establishments in the commercial business zone with a special permit. It won't be within the two, it will still happen, it's still within the two years because the previous no vote, there was a vote, well, it was on the warrant last May, I think, and we didn't do anything at all with it. The, it was on the warrant on May 14th, two years ago, which is three days short of May 11th. So if we are going to do anything at town meeting on this, it's going to have to be by, by a recommendation of the planning board. So we'll see what they do there. I think they're holding their hearing on the 16th of April, I believe, for any of the zoning articles. Then we've got a couple of other things that came in after posted the agenda. Playboard member Ashley DeCesaro had met with me this morning about the possibility of having mobile homes in Halifax count towards the town's lower moderate income housing requirements in Chapter 40B.
We tried that at one point.
Right. So if we were interested in doing that, I, I did send a letter, a note to Senator Brady and Representative Lenatra about timing in the sense of if we submitted legislation at this point, would, could anything be done with it during this session? Because if being election year, they usually end their formal session in the middle of July, something like that, then it's informal. Anything that passes during that time has to be passed unanimously. Whether it would make sort of more sense in essence to have, if we did pass something, to submit it for the next legislative session starting in January. But saying that aside, I think there are a few options. One is the board itself could submit it without going to town meeting. The second is we could do a home rule petition just for Halifax or home rule petition asking for the change in the general laws. What it really does is that there's a definition of low and moderate income housing under Chapter 40B. It would have to be rewritten to extend to whatever the definition of mobile homes or manufactured housing would be.
And remove any deed restriction requirements because those are in there now too. And people would have to voluntarily, well, because otherwise people would have to voluntarily offer their full units up to take less money.
We went through the same process when they were proposed in Donald Route 36 by a rail station on the office buildings, office buildings slash residents. We went through the whole process and then they didn't get us anywhere.
Well, the, the state has tried, or certain individuals or certain communities have tried to do this, and I'm not suggesting we don't try because then things change. But it was met with tremendous resistance. This, this administration in particular is promoting housing here and
So I don't know if there's an interest in having me contact Attorney Mayo to write a draft to bring to the warrant either of the two warrants.
Why don't you contact, I would suggest we contact Senator Brady and Representative Lenatra and see if there's anything else brewing in this subject and see what their take is on it.
Or if they had any other community go through this process.
Or if, yeah.
If we're doing something for town meeting, we're going to run out of time also. So I certainly would contact them and find that out. But on the board's last meeting before the warrant goes to press is the 24th.
What would it cost us for a home rule petition?
Well, it doesn't cost them anything.
Well, someone has to draft it, right?
Well, yeah, that's why I was saying, do you want me to contact Attorney Mayo?
So we, if you want.
We'd spend a little money, yeah.
Yeah. So I'm kidding, man. We can put it in the warrant and then take it out if we didn't like it.
I would be okay, I mean, if she put it forward. I would think it would make sense if we're gonna do it, to do it right. And whether or not it goes anywhere is another
No, 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 that's why I said, I don't disagree, you know, that, I, I've always been in favor of the concept. We have 430 units over there that we can't get any
It doesn't go towards the 10%.
Not, not all of those people fall under
For housing.
That's another issue, but at least a percentage of them, which I thought was going to happen last time, but it didn't.
Do you need a motion to allow you to do that?
No, I mean, just talking, you tell me to, we'll do it. I'll get in contact, I'll contact our state reps, I'll contact Larry Wolf.
Thank you.
Request for ambulance abatement in hardship. We had a Whitman resident who had a family member transported by the Halifax ambulance because the ambulance is not part of her insurance provider's network, which surprises me, like the line check, the fire chief. This was a horse riding accident several months ago, chief, and it was for the Anthem, who's the provider. And Anthem paid only about 20% of the fee.
Yeah, I can check with the
But she asked the town to abate the remainder of the bill due to financial hardship. We had a similar situation, I think, just a few months ago, and we sent a letter to the resident just explaining, we're not, you know, we're not going to put a lien on your house or something like that. We'll go through the normal process, which is we'll send a couple of letters saying, hi, we'd like you to pay, and then at some point we write it off. I don't see why not, I wouldn't send a similar letter saying, I can't abate this for you, neither can the board, but just wait it out and you'll stop hearing from us. And you're not going to have some, you know, ding on your credit or something like that.
If you want to just follow us
Yeah.
Information, look at it with our
Sure.
Company, we can even contact her.
Okay. And then
What's she gonna do? You're gonna do the contacting?
Well, I'm gonna get the information, I'm gonna, yeah.
I'm gonna go along exactly, but
But I'm gonna, but I'll also explain to her what the process is. If you, if the department is able to get more money from Anthem, great. But it isn't her worry to try and get that money from Anthem. But it's, so I'll tell her what the process is going to be. Again, on zoning, I talked to the board about abandoned properties and seeing if we wanted to get a bylaw in place so that if we were trying to sell those, that they could be developed. The board asked me to carry this over for a couple of weeks. I can carry it over again to the 24th, but at that point, it's either in or out. So if you wanted to do something about it tonight, that's fine. If you want to do something about it in two weeks, that's
Are we gonna talk about this on the 17th?
I don't think so, no. Because it's not, it's not part of the multi-family. The idea here would be a special permit for a single family house. So And the, I, I can ask Amy to talk about it, certainly. I think the wording I got is from Amy back a year ago when we were looking at this the first time. I'm sorry, Troy.
So the biggest question is, is if there's an already existing house on the property, even though it might not have been conforming years ago. If the house is torn down, we take it over because of tax? We, we're seeking to be able to build on the property?
Yes.
But there's language in here that says, any future use shall be in conformity with the provisions of this chapter, when most of those lots you can't, you can't, can't.
But the, but the lot itself is still a legal lot, no? Yes?
Yes, but you can't
You'd have to get variances for
Any future use shall be in conformity with the provisions, and the provisions set up the setbacks.
Okay.
And if it's a 5,000 square foot lot, there's no way you're going to be able to maintain all the setbacks.
Well, then as I, as Gordon mentioned
You'd have to get variances.
Yeah. I mean, I can talk to Amy about language again. Please do. I think that was the only thing I have there. Yeah, GATR canceled, they're gonna be coming in like 20, on the, sorry, 28th, so.
Charlie, did, on that, did you, I guess, I know when we talked about that before, there was an issue with how to do the scheduling with the Council on Aging and the reception work and, so would we have to shift hours or pay?
I don't know, I think, I think we, more, I think you're discussing with GATR, it's like, what are they going to do or not to, both in terms of services and the scheduling and such?
A lot of them are, what kind of services can they provide to us, and how often and how much is going to
Because I mean, I think when I was talking to them in Plington, what I was getting was that they would hire their own, not their own employees, but their own contractors. And so, and it would sound to me like you still, you need a central scheduling place which would be here. So you might need, depending on what the schedule load is, you might in fact need more help doing the scheduling because you'd be dealing with more trips and more coordination.
Okay.
I mean, this is me just spinning around about it. And this is me just spinning around about it. Okay, Chief, are you in for anything else?
Just, I didn't know if you were to discuss with one of the policy questions that we had talked about concerning COVID.
Well, I think we could do that in executive session. All, we have all the contracts under the executive session, so we could talk about that. I mean, I did talk with them, obviously, a little bit briefly about administratively, but that was more of a general discussion for all departments.
Okay.
But we can continue that discussion specific to the fire department, so.
Good night.
Good night. So there are two reasons going executive session. One is to, for contract negotiations, firefighters, sergeants, patrol officers, highway, the mixed unit, police chief and fire chief, as discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining in an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town. And then after that discussion's concluded, we'll move over to litigation, which would be the Anjos versus Halifax case as discussing strategy with respect to litigation, open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining, on that bargaining, I guess, the position, legal position of the town. So I'm asking the board to vote to go into executive session for both reasons and we would not be coming out of, be back into public session and not making any announcements at this.
So moved. Second.
Gordon?
I'll stand for the second half. Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Just wash your hands, folks.
Be frugal. Just play yourself.